This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, this is the Virtual Board of Selecting Meeting for Monday, June 1st. At this time, all participants will be muted and the meeting will be closed to new attendees. As indicated on tonight's agenda and currently on Channel 18, we will be inviting people for public comment. To get in line to speak, you must send an email to comment@town.horwich.ma.us. At the time of public comment, those emails will be taken in the order they were received. Those emails may be sent at any time. Mr. Ballottine, or yours?
Thank you, Scott. I'm waiting for Jamie to, uh... We're live, so I will... We opened the June 1st, 2020 Horwich Board of Selectance Meeting and went into executive session in which we discussed pursuant to MGL 30A, Section 21, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Chief of Police, incoming Fire Chief, and Finance Director. Joe Powers, our interim Town Minister, asked for some general guidance going into negotiations for these contracts, and so we had that discussion, and there will be follow-up. I will comment that we've been given some relief tonight by Megan, our Board of Health Director. Since we're in a room, we're six feet apart, we've been askew, some wearing a mask for the Board of Selectance Meeting. We had some discussion because we do want to set a proper example, and I can show I have a mask, but we also learned from feedback that we need to improve our communication, our articulation of these skills, because partly with the mask, we were probably not speaking as loudly as we could, possibly in my case, mumbling when I should not, and I need to go louder. And we need to be sure we speak one at a time. And so that's why we're sitting here, hopefully to remind you to wear masks, but we'll promise to stay six feet apart. I'll start the meeting then with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
First on the agenda is Weekly Briefing, and Joe, not surprisingly, our first is the COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, with quite a bit of information to go through this evening on the one hand, and unfortunately, guidance that we desperately need from the Commonwealth on restaurants still has not arrived. Megan will speak in a moment. We were on a Department of Public Health call today where the discussion was obviously a sign of the times with the rioting that's been occurring and the role of Boards of Health going forward in those, and discussion on camps and childcare. So in your packets, you'll see first that what we have specific to the town of Horwich, we have two resumption plans, and we have the two department heads that have been working feverishly on the resumption plan. So what I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, is turn it over at this point to our Library Director, Ginny Hewitt, to walk you through the plan for curbside pickup, which will begin next week, the week of June 8th. Megan and I met virtually with Ginny last week and staff, and they've done a great job to get us to this point. And then after Ginny, we'll hear from our Harbor Master on his resumption plans as well. And then, of course, Megan and I have much more to talk about.
Okay, thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Jenny, you wish to start? You may be muted.
Scott, can you take Ginny off of mute?
Ginny, can you hear us? I will try to send her a request. Ginny, there's a microphone icon at the bottom of your screen if you move your mouse. If you hit that microphone, you'll unmute yourself.
Mr. Chairman, if you want to proceed.
Let's call John first.
I'll connect with Ginny.
Okay. John, can you join us now, and then we'll go back to Ginny Hewitt to talk to the library?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
I can, we can, yes.
Okay, um, yes, I'd like to, you know, I think we're in a good position to reopen our Harbor Master office to the public. I've outlined, you know, some steps that we will ensure are taken. As most of you know, our office is open every day, seven days a week, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at night through the boating season, which is Memorial Day to Columbus State. And the type of business that we conduct at the office during the season is the sale of daily and seasonal ramp passes. We have short-term tie-ups that come in to spend a couple of hours, and they come in and pay dockage for that. Of course, we have transient dockage. We do a large volume of shellfish permits that we sell there, and other permits such as waterway user fees, wait lists, et cetera. We deal a lot with the public when they have questions regarding charter boats or ferry boats or other boats that are there. So, um, you know, we have been outfitted properly with a Plexiglas protective panel. The setup of our office, I think, is ideal in that we have a front counter right at the entrance of our inside glass door. We have two glass doors that are for entry. One goes into a foyer, and then the next glass door, you enter into our office. And so, um, you know, our proposal is that we allow one customer in inside the office at a time. We require that that customer have a mask, a face covering. Our staff will at all times, when dealing with the public, will have a face covering as well, and of course, we have the Plexiglas that is in between the two. We'll put signage up to reflect that. I think we could have one person waiting in the foyer, and then if there's more people waiting, we will have six feet distances marked out on the deck leading into the office. I know Megan has gotten some signage together for us. Obviously, we wouldn't open up until all signage is properly posted. We'll have hand sanitizer available for the public as well. And, um, and I think that's it. Right now, our public restrooms are not open, but I think that's something we should consider, especially when the snack shack has tables that people are able to sit and eat. I think at that point, we should be thinking about opening up our public restrooms. So if there's any questions, we'd be happy to address them.
I have one question, possibly to Megan. In terms of the bathrooms, is that tied into opening, you know, across town generally? Is that tied into the restaurant, or what triggers that?
Restaurants require a bathroom for their employees only. Restaurants actually don't require bathrooms for the public. The state plumbing code does, so that may be a violation of the state plumbing code if bathrooms aren't available to the general public. So once they are able to have sit-down dining service there, they will need a bathroom if they have a certain number of people there. I believe it's 13, 13 or 19 under the state building code. The operator of that food service establishment has a key, I believe, to the Harbor Office, so they do have access to the bathroom in the meantime.
Thanks, Megan. Let me ask you a question a different way. If we have bathrooms not related to restaurants, say in the golf course or the Harbor Master shop, is there a special category for that facility? Is it in a later phase, or what's the trigger for that?
They're able to be open, aside from the golf course. The golf course, I'm not sure why, but they have a separate requirement to keep their clubhouse closed. They're able to have onsite portable toilets, porta-potties there. The harbor is able to open their bathrooms. The only stopping point is custodial services. If a facility is open, it requires daily cleaning and disinfection and weekly deep clean. So right now, I know we don't have enough janitorial services to cover every bathroom in town every day, so that may be why we're not opening that one, but there isn't a reason or a phase that bathrooms are not open now. They could be, it's just a matter of keeping them clean and safe.
Okay, that answers that, and I guess, Jill, that throws it back to your resource issue as soon as we can do that. Other questions or comments for John? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is more relating to what Megan said, and I feel like it's better if it's said here because it's definitely going to be said in the community. I know it's not our order about the porta-potties, but intellectually, it just doesn't make any sense that you... The porta-potties would be fine in a pandemic, but bathrooms that you could clean readily wouldn't be. I mean, it just boggles the mind that that's their thinking, and I'm sure somebody's going to say it, so I figured I'd say it first.
Thank you, Don. John, anything else? Are people starting to go to fish and so on?
Yes, sir. We got, you know, we got a marina filling up real quick. As you know, um, you know, the guidance for boating came out, and one of the recent changes was the charter boats, the six-pack licensed boats can start to chartering, and they have done that. Our ferry is still not running. I think their plan is to look to start running July 1st, and our large passenger boats are unable to run because of the requirement to not have more than 10 people in a group. So, you know, we have three big passenger boats that carry, you know, a significant number of people who cannot operate currently. But besides that, our recreational boaters are coming in. Of course, our commercial fleet's still operating, and the charter boats have started.
Thank you, John. Michael?
Yeah, I'll say the second part of the comment for Joe when we talk about opening bathrooms and which are most important for the services that we do. I would say that John is extremely busy in that harbor now, and a lot of people are using their boats this year that normally don't use them until July, so I think that's an important bathroom to get open. John, on the ferry and the big passenger boats, and maybe Joe as well, is there any... And I know the town can't afford to give people reimbursements on slips and fees, but is there anything in the CARES Act that the town could reimburse a portion of the slip fee for these people this year because of how much business that they're losing? Is it possible to give back some of the money through the CARES Act, not from town funds?
If I may speak to that, Mr. Chairman. Presently, there's been discussion about the use of CARES Act to account for... Quite a feedback there. To account for lost revenue. It's not in place now, however, so it is not a covered cost yet, but there is significant discussion around that, so it could change in the very near future.
Thank you. I think that's something the board should keep track of and endorse if we have the opportunity to.
Yeah, okay. John, any other comments?
No, sir. I think that's... I appreciate your consideration.
Well, thanks for the work as your crew is doing. We're obviously not overstaffed and very busy, so that's good. We'll move next to Ginny Hewitt. Jenny, are you... Can you hear us now?
Good evening, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, great. I don't know what happened to my audio a while ago. I thought you were still in executive session, and then I saw you all standing up to do the Pledge of Allegiance. So, all right, so I'm here to talk about the curbside pickup plan. E-books and electronic resources have continued to be available to patrons for the past couple months while we've been closed to the public, but we're so excited to be able to start this service and get, you know, materials out into the hands of patrons again. It seemed like this day would never get here. One of the main concerns people have when they think about library services during a pandemic is the safety of borrowing materials that, you know, other patrons have had and that they've had in their homes. So I want to reassure everyone, the health of patrons and staff members is our top priority. We're following guidance from the Center for Disease Control and the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. So we're going to be quarantining all items for 72 hours when they're returned. So time is considered the best disinfectant, and once that quarantine period passes, no further action is needed to disinfect materials. So patrons will return all the items by putting them in the book drop themselves. They won't be allowed to hand them to staff members. And once the bin in the book drop room is full, we'll wheel it to a quarantine area where it'll sit for three days. After the quarantine is passed, we'll retrieve the bin and check in the individual items. So, and then they're available for the next patron to use. So patrons may notice that after they return something, it will sit on their record for a couple of days, and that's okay. CLAMs libraries have agreed to waive fines during this pandemic, and so no charges will be incurred because of the quarantine. We've designed the curbside pickup service to be no contact. Patrons will be scheduled for an appointment. Each appointment period will be a half hour, so say it's 10 to 10:30, and they can come anytime during that period, and we hope that that will ease any congestion because they have a whole half-hour window. When they get here, they have parked their vehicles, walk up to the pickup area, and pick up the bag that it'll be labeled with their last name. So, and they'll put any returns in the book drop themselves. So we will have staff members outside to provide direction if needed, but really, it's a very simple process. We think it'll be quick. If there's a line does develop, we'll have designated spots where people can wait. So to place requests, people do that themselves online using the CLAMs catalog, or they can call us if they can't use the CLAMs catalog, or sometimes they may not have a specific title in mind, so they need some help, like they just want to say, you know, "I need three mysteries," or "I like this author," that kind of thing. So they can call us anytime. Well, actually, we're setting up time Monday to Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and our number is 508-430-7562. So a couple of points I wanted to make. The statewide delivery system that brings items from one library to another has not yet resumed. They have a tremendous backlog with thousands of, tens of thousands of items and bins all over the Commonwealth. So it's going to take some time for that to get back to normal, possibly not until the end of June. And so until then, our curbside pickup service will be limited to items that are available here at Brooks Free Library. Patrons can place requests on items from other libraries, and they will eventually come, but not until the delivery service resumes. So this, without this delivery service, this impacts our automated system because the whole system is based on, you know, it automatically requests things for you, and so we're going to have to do some manual workarounds until it's fully functioning again. And so operations just aren't as efficient as they would be in normal times. So for this reason, we're limiting the number of items a patron can request at one time and the hours and days of the pickup service. And as we gain experience and streamline our operations, we'll expand the number of items allowed and the days and hours of our time slots. We basically had to reinvent the way we do everything. It's like setting up an Amazon fulfillment center so that we can keep requests and items on hold organized and ensure they're, you know, being put out for the right patron at the right time. So this week, we're doing a test run of our curbside pickup procedures, starting with there were over 100 patrons who had items on our hold shelf when we shut down in the middle of March. And so we started calling them on Thursday and Friday, and they're scheduled for pickup this week. Today, we started accepting new requests from patrons, and we're also working on holds that have been placed in the past two months, and we have a rather long list of those patrons. So it's kind of a little bit of a backlog. Right now, when people are getting scheduled for appointments, it'll be for next week. So as we, as we get that backlog cleared, people won't have to wait as long to pick up their items. I did want to say, too, that the Friends of Brooks Free Library are restarting their Books on Wheels Homebound Delivery Program, and that uses volunteer drivers, and they bring items to the patrons' house. So that's normally for people that have disabilities or can't drive for whatever reason, and they're willing to open that up to anyone in the community who wants it, maybe people who have a compromised immune system, whatever. So anyone who's interested may call the library and give us their information, and we'll pass it along to the Books on Wheels Coordinator. And the other thing, I just wanted to say, we are not able to accept any donations, so we ask people not to leave boxes outside or don't, you know, return any non-library books or DVDs to us because we just can't handle that at this time. I think that's about it, just for anyone, any community members who are interested. The curbside pickup plan is on our website, which is www.brooksfreelibrary.org, and is part of the larger Resumption of Services Plan. So if they wanted to take a look at what potential phases might look like, it's on the website. So that's our plan. We're grateful to Joe and to Megan for taking the time to review our plan and giving us the authorization to get started. We're really anxious, too. It's, uh, staff people are very excited, and so far, the patrons we called have been pretty excited as well.
Thank you, Jenny. Questions or comments? There's a detailed report, Jenny, and as always, we very much appreciate all your efforts. I think we're, as we're waiting for daycare, we're also very excited when you can open up to letting the town kids in there as well, but that'll be down the road.
Oh, yeah, we are, too. It's been very difficult, you know? We're always in the library field, we're always trying to stay as long, open as long as we can when a storm's coming or open early, you know, and this was, this is just so different. I did want to mention, so we have a mix for pickup times of morning, afternoon, and evening times. We weren't able to do Saturday hours again because of the restroom, the, well, the disinfection needed to have staff in the building, but I know that's, I heard part of what you were discussing about that. I know that's something that's being worked on. So hopefully, in the future, we can be able to do that as well.
Thank you, Jenny. If no other questions, we'll move on, Jill, to the next item.
Well, still under Item A for COVID-19 updates. As I mentioned in my memo to the board, very pleased to say that staff has been planning, and we're going to have another planning session on June 4th, and that is for the Monomoy Regional High School graduation ceremony. We don't know what it will look like, but we now know that we will have one, which is a wonderful statement for the community. You'll be hearing from Roman.
Jill, excuse me, did you restate the date of that?
Well, the planning session is going to take place on June 4th.
The graduation?
The graduation is tentatively scheduled for June 23rd.
And I think I've read that there'll be some participation, but it'll be open on Zoom or some mechanism like that as well.
That's what we're hoping to firm up on the 4th.
Okay.
Yep. Once we have more information, there'll be an update to the community through the board. You'll be hearing probably within the week from our Golf Director. Golf had some functions that were related to Phase 2. We know that Phase 2 is now scheduled to kick off as early as June 8th if the numbers support it, so that would be expanded hours for Golf as well as resuming use of the driving range. Megan and I will actually be bringing to the board a plan that ties into essential businesses, non-essential businesses, and office space, which is one of the guidance documents that you saw in the packet. When Governor Baker announced on May 18th that we were working towards this, there was a statement about occupancy capacity. So we are working on that because as a government operation, as an essential business, we have an obligation to meet those requirements. However, we have a grandfather clause, if you will, that does not require us to have a plan in place until July 1st. So Megan and I have been working very actively on that with other staff to figure out how that's going to impact upon office space throughout town buildings. It will impact on remote work capabilities and several others. So the point on that is, as we get more guidance and other departments or other areas are able to reopen, we'll use this mechanism to report back to the board. And then the last item I have before Megan gets into her numbers and her updates is the MMA announced on Thursday that they got word from the Executive Office of Public Safety that testing for COVID-19 for essential workers, government workers, has been extended to municipal government workers. Megan and I veiled ourselves of that on Friday. We tried two different locations. Obviously, my tests, because they came back, they came back negative, otherwise I wouldn't be here right now. But Megan and I, we're going to be updating the staff going forward to roll out some guidance on discretionary. It's not mandatory, but if employees are looking to be tested, municipal government employees can now be tested. So we'll get more into that information as well. With that, I'll turn it over to Megan for her updates and her numbers on cases and everything else.
Hello, Megan.
Hi, Larry. The numbers, the dashboard on the mass.gov website has changed a little bit, if anyone has looked at it today. They are now reporting confirmed cases as well as probable cases, and probable cases are people who have had the antibody test and it's come back positive, or someone who has displayed symptoms of COVID-19 and they are a close contact of someone who was confirmed positive by laboratory test. So those numbers kind of got dumped into the dashboard today. So the new cases look really huge, but they're not, they're not that huge. It's 3,500 probable cases from the very beginning of when they started doing serology testing back in April up until June 1st. Today are those probable cases that got dumped into the system. So if we look at total numbers, the dashboard's showing 3,840 new cases, and that's confirmed and probable. However, only 326 of those are laboratory confirmed, which is the data that we've been going off of all along. So I don't want anyone to look at it and say, "Oh, jeez, you know, we've got 3,000 new cases this, over the weekend," and that's not the case. We have, with the new dashboard, we're going to be including those numbers from here on forward. So we've got a total of 100,805 confirmed and probable cases in Massachusetts, and we also have 7,035 confirmed deaths from COVID-19. In Barnstable County, our numbers are creeping up. They're not going up astronomically or exponentially. Right now, we're at 1,424 positive cases, and again, that includes the probable and confirmed cases. Barnstable County has 118 deaths related to COVID-19, and in Horwich, our numbers, I have not included our probable cases because no one actually told us they were doing that. They just kind of, kind of put it on the website today. So ours are just confirmed, and we have 121 total, and 71 of those are associated with the wing gate, and that's residents and or staff. So it leaves 50 others. We did have a few new cases over the last 48 hours, and they are connected to previously confirmed cases. So that includes household members, household contacts of cases that we already knew about. It just goes to show how easy it is to contract the virus when you're living in close quarters or even a home. You can, you can give this virus to your family members. In Horwich, we have a total of 22 deaths, and 18 of those are associated with... and 18 of those are associated with Wingate. Something interesting on the dashboard of the mass.gov website, which circles back to the reopening plans, are the six indicators for reopening. And we have yellow, green, and, and red for things we're looking at if we're going to go forward with opening. And those six indicators are number of positive, the positive test rate, number of individuals who have died from COVID-19, number of patients in hospitals, healthcare system readiness, testing capacity, and contact tracing capabilities. Right now, we have two greens and four yellows. The greens are positive trends and that is in the COVID-19 positive test rate and testing capacity. So in order for us to move to the second phase, we need to move into positive trends for number of individuals who have died. That needs to trend downward. Number of patients with COVID-19 in hospitals also has to trend down. Healthcare system readiness needs to trend upward as well as contact tracing capabilities. From the conversations with DPH, which we are now having calls almost every day, those four yellows are close to turning green. We have increasing testing capacities and healthcare system readiness is, is looking good. We've got only seven patients in Cape Cod Hospital and two in the ICU, which is a downward trend from even a week ago. Governor Baker is going to make an announcement on Friday, June 6th, as to whether or not he is giving the green light to go to Phase Two or not. So we are looking to Friday, the 6th, for more information on a thumbs up or thumbs down to move into Phase Two on potentially Monday, the 8th. We have new guidance for restaurants, lodging, and retail spaces that came out over the, well, Friday and today. So Friday, our phone call had, with the DPH, had restaurant guidelines and mandatory workplace safety standards. And same for lodging. So we learned about those two new updates from the state on Friday. And today, we learned about camps for Phase Two as well as retail spaces. And that guidance and documents, those documents are up on MassDPH's reopening page. That page has a lot of resources for industry as far as what they need to do in order to be able to open either in the current phase or in Phase Two. And then it has guidelines on best practices on how to make that happen. So the, there's standards that need to be set. For instance, restaurants, there's certain mandatory things like tables. You have to keep six feet apart. So all parties are six feet away from other parties with a maximum party size of six feet. Bars are not allowed to be open. And there are a variety of other mandatory things for restaurants. And then they get into the best practices of disposable menus, no salad bars, reservations, call ahead reservations so you don't have a line waiting. And then the hygiene protocols that every business needs to follow for, follow for face coverings, hand washing, hand sanitizer, reporting if you're sick, not coming into work if you're sick. So we've been working with the, both Joe and I and my assistant Katie have been working on getting this guidance out to the restaurants. They've been chomping at the bit for it. And we have set up a go-to-meeting seminar-type thing for all restaurant owners or managers to attend, to, to watch and to listen on Wednesday in the afternoon. That seminar will provide restaurant owners and managers a time to hear what the guidance is, hear our interpretation of it because everything that comes out from the governor's office is open to interpretation. And also, I have requested that they all email in their specific questions ahead of time so I can be prepared to answer their questions during the seminar. And I'm doing the same thing for lodging the next day on Thursday morning. And I anticipate doing more for camps, although we only have a few camps and pools in retail spaces. So we're very, very busy working with industry and Department of Public Health, trying to figure out what all of this guidance and standards mean and how to regulate it. We have gotten some information on some grants. Excuse me. We got an email that I forwarded to Joe. That's, that's for reopening and looking at alternatives for outdoor spaces and how the local government can assist businesses in making that smooth transition. We know restaurants specifically are going to be looking into spilling out of their doors and outside into their properties and potentially into parking lots and sidewalks and even streets in some places. So we want industry to know that we are open to all suggestions and possibilities. We just need to go through the proper channels and make sure everything's legal. And we are trying to streamline that process and not make it so. It's so cumbersome that by the time you get all your approval summers over, that's not what we're looking to do. So we have quite a few lines in the water, if you want to call it that. We, we're looking to, to try to get this done as soon as possible. That's, that's all I have for right now.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I can just build off of that. Megan's presentation crept into Item B. But while she was talking, Megan, I just sent you an email that I had received from Senator Seer. So just to give you a sense of how we've been operating, we just received word this evening that Governor Baker has released his Phase Two order. And within that has information specific to our discussion this evening. In his Phase Two order released tonight, it says preparations and accommodation for outdoor restaurant dining service. And if you'll allow me, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to read two items that are going to relate to the discussion we're about to have. The opening paragraph says restaurants will be authorized to provide outdoor table service at the commencement of Phase Two of the Commonwealth's phased reopening of workplaces. If the public health data reflects continued positive progression, restaurants will be authorized at a later date and by a subsequent Phase Two order to commence indoor table service. In each case, restaurants will be required to comply with sector-specific COVID-19 workplace safety rules for restaurants, which we have in the packet this evening. There's a definition of what outdoor table service is meant. I can read that if you'd like. But before I get to that, there is a closing paragraph that says, "In order to provide improved opportunities for outdoor table service for any type of license that permits the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premises consumption, a local licensing authority," so that would be the Board of Selectmen in this case, "may grant approval for a change in the description of the license premises for the purpose of permitting outdoor alcohol service as the local licensing authority may deem reasonable and proper and issue an amended license to existing license holders without further review or approval by the ABCC prior to issuance. Upon approval of an amended license, the local licensing authority shall provide notice of the amended license to the ABCC." So in my memorandum to you folks tonight, we talked about the DPH call that we were hoping to get guidance on today. We did not. I'm very hopeful that the call we have with the Lieutenant Governor tomorrow will give more guidance on that. But I think what it means is our discussion tonight can now talk about when we may be able to get in front of you as the licensing authority amended licenses for outdoor service of alcohol. So this is all just coming out this evening. It's the kind of information we've been hoping for, but we're still going to have to vet it and get into it. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to Item B, which is in your packets. And we also have Cindy Williams, Director of the Chamber of Commerce, on for this.
Let me just, the liquor license, that's, that's excellent because that throws it back to us as local boards.
That's where we're holding.
So we can streamline it. That's, that's what we've been hoping for. Megan, this may be an unfair question, but if the June 8th is dependent on the three yellows turning green and a trend, I'm not sure. We probably need to understand that trend with this the previous week or since the beginning. If we don't make that and then the next day, the trend looks more positive, do we wait another week before the decision's made? Or do they do that on a, do you have any idea how, how that works?
They, they indicated they're, they're doing that on a weekly basis. So that's why they had said each week would be a minimum of three weeks. Each phase would be a minimum of three weeks because they don't want to look at a random bad day or a random good day. They want to see a trend. So it's not going to be based on one or two days' worth of data. It will, it will be a week's worth. So if on Friday, the data's not looking good and we don't get to go to Phase Two as scheduled, we would be waiting another week till we know when, if that would happen.
So the trend is one week at a time? You're not looking at a trend over the period that we've been under the?
Each trend is a minimum of three weeks. So Phase One, we're in, we're almost, we're at the very beginning of the third week. If we need four weeks of data, we'll take four weeks of data. If for the fourth week, we still aren't all green, we'll do a fifth week. If we're into Phase Two, we're, we're into Phase Two for a minimum of three weeks to make sure the trends are steady. And if we need more time in Phase Two, we'll continue and do week to week.
Michael.
Megan, you mentioned that there was seven in, in Cape Cod Hospital and two in ICU. Is, is, is that Harwich residents or is that all of Cape Cod?
That's all of Cape Cod. That, that's in Cape Cod Hospital. I didn't check the Falmouth Hospital data, but that data is available as well on that dashboard. Pretty easy to find if you're looking at daily updates. You can go to daily updates and every day, there's a new update that comes out about 4 o'clock and it lists county data and hospitalization data for each hospital in the state. On Wednesdays, they're doing a town-by-town data. So you can list every, it lists every town in the Commonwealth and the number of cases they have. But hospital data is always available on a daily basis on that dashboard.
Thank you. On the trend line issue, the, I guess my question is, is the numbers from Wingate skewing our trend line? Or is it just a state trend line?
It's a state trend line. So the trend lines are not town-by-town or even county-by-county. They're an overall statewide trend. But long-term care are, are a huge chunk of all cases and all, most deaths. So getting that under control is very, very vital to moving forward.
Okay. And then the, out of the 121 cases in Harwich, 71 we've picked for Wingate. Out of the 50-ish, how many do you know are still active cases in the town of Harwich?
I know of at least 15. And that's ballpark, don't, don't quote that, but it's, it's between 12 and 15 are active. And a couple of those are workers at long-term care facilities that may not be at Wingate but may at surrounding towns. And the bulk of those are households. So I know of at least two households that have three to four members in each. So it's not as if it's spread all over town. It's, it's gotten into a household because someone's a healthcare worker and then it's spread to their family. And, and it's, it's frightening because then that family, if they don't follow the quarantine and isolation rules, it can quickly then spread again. So we are, we are containing it as best we can, but our numbers are a little bit bigger than they were last week because households have infected other members of the households.
Thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we move on, and there's no real good place to do this, but Megan's still here, so I wanted her to hear this, too. Amongst the camps, there's also the preschools that had sessions. And I just want everybody to understand that, to disclose again, I'm Vice President of HESH. We run the Children's Center. And there's a difference between what the government is allowing you to do and what is actually feasible to do. So unlike restaurants and some of these other places, we can't do certain things, but a lot of these smaller businesses predicate their ability on doing things on the, on the basis of, if you've got kids, you need someplace to go so I can go to work. HESH basically laid off all of its staff at the Children's Center this past week. We're not even sure when we're going to come back. And that's mainly because the rules that allow it to come back, I understand the safety aspect of this, but the rules that allow it to come back are completely implausible. They, they change the teacher-student ratios to something that's onerous, that can't be sustained by income. You have to clean, you have to have separate sets of Legos for each kid. They've gotten into minutia. There's just no way that I can see any of these preschools opening, not only this summer, but you may wind up losing a number of them permanently. And that's a mechanism that a lot of working people rely on. And I just wanted everybody to hear that.
Thank you, Don. Joel, will you turn?
Well, really, like I said, I would, I think if we now want to progress to the discussion under Item B and the materials, bearing in mind that we just got some significant information that will still need to be vetted and, and dissected tomorrow on the various calls. But this would be the appropriate time to recognize our, our colleague in the community from the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Joel. And Cindy?
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, Larry. You're welcome. So as Megan and Joe both mentioned, we're working closely together on what is the easiest and safest way to get our businesses up and running. This is great news that Joe just mentioned. So that'll be exciting to get that out there to everyone once it's all vetted. Big things this week coming up will be the two virtual meetings that we have with the restaurants on Wednesday and the lodging on Thursday. Megan has sent the email out. I have followed up with all of our members that are in both of those sectors and they are eagerly awaiting the guidance as well. So as you all know, we can't wait to get everybody open. They're holding their own, recreating themselves in a way. Some of our restaurants have gotten very creative. But it's time. And so, you know, we're going to work together as we have been, the three of us closely, but we'll rely on all you guys, too. So we're going to think outside the box.
Thank you, Cindy. Any questions or comments? Michael?
Just related to the outdoor seating and the liquor license, what seems like relaxed liquor regulations from ABCC. You know, this board, I think we owe it to the community to meet as often as we can. So to think that they're going to have to file with the Board of Health, Building Commissioner, come back and then come back a week later to the Board of Selectmen is going to kind of make this not worthwhile. So I hope the board will entertain meetings of at least three of us as often as we can and these applications are ready. And then more important, I think, we need to be ready to hit send. I think on the, on the regulations, I'm not sure how many restaurants have reached out to the Board of Health and the Building Commissioner with plans. But I would encourage the businesses to do so and I would encourage the regulatory boards in town to be looking at these now. So if the regulations get relaxed next week, we can permit these people to operate next week and not wait a week after the regulations or even a week after that. So I, I hope we're doing everything we can internally to make this process ready to go and not wait for the guidance and then come up with the, the format that we're going to use.
Steve, and then I'll?
Yeah, and I mean, in response to Michael, I, I would absolutely, you know, whenever we can call a meeting, if we can help a local business, I'll be here.
Let me, let me suggest, add send an email. We had the, well, we got Selectmen's meeting this morning video. And one comment that I thought was interesting on that, of course, the two issues was what we heard now was getting local, allowing us to permit liquor sales. The next one was zoning, which we can also deal with. But the, the one I thought was interesting was is suggesting that we, as Board of Selectmen, should consider being proactive. proactive and possibly putting together more of a checklist guidance. So it streamlines what is asked of the businesses, that it comes to us very quickly without a case, move from a case-by-case situation to providing the more of a checklist guidance. If you do this, it's done, and we could handle that. Possibly, this didn't come up, but in my mind, maybe we can do that pro forma, so we don't even get together if they give the administration authority, if they, if this guidance is agreed to, to move ahead. Because we don't want to hold them up. We have a very short summer. Joe?
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman, and speaking to what all of you have just said, in the Phase Two order from Governor Baker, in that same passage that talks about outdoor seating, service of alcohol, it also says, notwithstanding the provisions of Chapter 48 of the general laws, any special permit, variance, or other approval thereunder, or any general or special law to the contrary, a town may approve requests for expansion of outdoor table service, including in the description of licensed premises as discussed, as described below. That's what I referred to earlier. Prior to such approval, the Select Board shall establish the process for approving such requests. Such process need not comply with the notice and publication provisions of Section 11 of Chapter 48. So that, to me, is a significant change that allows us to get to what you're all talking about. And for purposes of discussion, I would suggest that perhaps we try to look at the June 8 meeting as dedicated solely to identifying that process and initiating that process at the same time. So that if Phase Two begins June 8, this board can meet and discuss the process and also initiate the process at the same time in hopes of getting everybody where they need to be sooner rather than later.
My assumption, then, is between you and Megan, you can at that time come to us as what the guidance should be, sort of what I was referring to, to streamline it.
Yeah, this is quite comprehensive. I'm...
Because, Michael, to your point, we don't want to make this cumbersome. Let's get it simple.
No, and I think, Cindy, it's important, as you reach out to these businesses, to get them to have their plans ready. I know some restaurants already do. I know other restaurants don't. Some have space outside that it's obvious that they can operate, others do not, and are going to need a little bit more planning. But as much as they can be ready, we've obviously just pledged to make things as quickly as we, make things done as quickly as we can here. But we need to make sure that they do it quickly as well, if they want to be open outside.
Absolutely. And something that, too, they're going to look, they've been waiting to hear the guidance as well. But on our Wednesday meeting with the restaurants, and what Joe has just mentioned, will all be mentioned there. So then now, they're going to know that all of you are going to push it forward as quickly as possible as well. So I've had conversations with many of them to get them started, looking at the creative things that they can do with their properties already. And then, so we're in a good place now. This is all good news that just came out.
Ed?
Well, there's some indication that we need to, we should approve a process first and then approve the license changes or whatever afterwards. It would seem to me, if we could, I'm trying to do the math in my head on the day's notice, but is it possible to meet Thursday night to approve the process? So it's, the process is approved, so on the 8th, people can bring in their applications, and we could just start approving them then. Because it would seem to me, we need to approve that process in advance of people putting their applications together.
For me, I need to turn it back and see what resources are from Jill and Megan.
Yeah. So my first response, in just reading this, I don't know that that would be necessary. Also, but beyond that, I don't know that it's practical. What Megan and I have been up against as we get these documents is then trying to get consistent answers from the state regulatory bodies and executive agencies. In reading this document, and again, I know I have a meeting tomorrow with the Lieutenant Governor who's planning on talking about it, and knowing what we can communicate to the restaurants on Wednesday and the lodging establishments on Thursday, it puts a lot of pressure on us to be ready for Thursday night. I also know that there's a couple other boards that are meeting, so it gives me concern to be ready for that. Within this section, however, it talks about it's waiving all of the public hearing requirements that would have related to all the regulatory bodies in town. And it says that approval of the plan by this board goes into effect immediately upon filing with the town clerk. So they've really created, it looks like in this Section 4, a situation where we can be in place on June 6, if June 6 is the beginning of Phase Two, and only the governor will dictate that. So I'd love to be able to say we can do Thursday. I don't know that it's practical to do Thursday, but I do feel comfortable leveraging the calls that Megan's already set up, that we can have as much occurring on Monday as possible.
Okay. Go ahead, Ed.
So you indicate that it says, on filing with the town clerk, the plan...
It's the approval by the board.
The approval by the board.
Of any of the plans or decisions that are made.
Okay. Well, we're here on the 1st. Our next meeting is on the 8th. If we just wait for that, it's hard to understand how on the 6th, we could have an approval...
Sorry, I misspoke. I was thinking of next Monday is the 6th.
But you're saying if we approve it on the 8th, they're ready to go on the next day?
Right. Remember that the one, the one area in this that is holding everything up is when Phase Two is confirmed to have begun. And the governor has indicated that he wouldn't start that earlier than June 8. And so I think we can have a packed agenda related to restaurants and approvals like this for June 8 that can start as early as June 9, assuming that that's when Phase Two goes into effect. And again, I've only read one section with one eye and paying attention to the rest of the board meeting. So it does have to be vetted. But it is far better than I was expecting as far as giving guidance to Megan and I and others to what we need to get done this week.
So when you say ready to go on the 9th, are you saying that the restaurateurs will be ready to go to submit their applications?
No, I'm suggesting that our conversation with them on Wednesday, they would have everything that they need before the board on Monday, the 8th. The board could approve the process and the applications Monday, the 8th. And if the businesses have everything in place, and the governor says that Phase Two is now in effect, it's theoretical that they could begin as soon as the 9th.
So I guess what you're basically saying is that what gets released to them on the 6th or whatever date, in terms of what the process is, we best, as a Select Board, not monkey with it on the 8th, or they're all going to be not in compliance.
What I would suggest is this, this board has been very consistent throughout this pandemic, that you've directed staff, and I've directed staff, to support businesses. So I'm very encouraged by what I've read in Section 4. My two major concerns, as I've said continually, were the regulatory requirements and the ABCC requirements. And it looks as though the governor's order is saying that this board, acting on behalf of this town, can develop the procedures and processes that you need to do that.
I would, from my perspective, I'd rather spend a little more time upfront to be sure that the process is simplified. You know, we're also used to bureaucratic processes. It's easy to start in good direction and then fall back into, well, we need this, we need this. If we can make it streamlined, so it does go quickly, I think we're in good... That's my preference. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to throw a wild card in here to underscore what Michael was saying earlier, and what Ed's saying right now. I understand that this is really supersonic speed for the government to be able to pull this off in a week, you know. But understand one thing. I mean, I own a seasonal store. I had a package good license. You could pretty much plan every year. The Memorial Day was insane. Then there was a trough, and it built back up to the third week when kids got out of school. And there was that dynamic each and every year. Nobody's going to school. The difference between taking a laptop, throw it in the back of the car, and coming down to the Cape to their other house, for instance, is negligible. They could still do virtual schoolwork here as well as there, to the extent that we can allow the possibility of having more shoulder season, what would have been shoulder season activity, to be able to support them. Because I don't think, in the middle of summer, the numbers are going to be as high as they've been. But if we could extend it sideways so that they can at least get the most out of the season possible, that would be a really urgent thought.
Thank you, Don. Michael?
Just in closing, I think that the state or COVID-19 has created what we could all say is an emergency. So I don't see why this board couldn't call an emergency meeting on Tuesday or Wednesday based on this. I think the fact that our businesses are struggling as much as they can, which would also result into revenue loss for the town, could be construed as an emergency under the AG's guidelines.
We'll call, we'll call any meeting as necessary. I just want, I want to be sure that we're streamlining the process as much as possible going into it. It's my only, it's my only point. Ed?
Mr. Chairman, if I could speak for a minute, I think the next big thing is the meeting on Wednesday, where Megan, Joe, and I go over everything with the restaurants and then with lodging on Thursday. So then, all that we've now heard that you'll be able to approve hopefully on Monday can happen, they're going to now know, and many of them have started to put this together. So I think that's where we next, the next steps are for everybody.
Okay. Ed, do you have more?
Well, I just, I guess my point is that I would much rather had a chance for the Select Board to weigh in towards the end of this week to make sure that we're in all leaning the same way as what's going to be proposed by staff on Monday, to make sure that something doesn't come up that throws everything off another week.
Okay. We'll do two things. We'll follow what, how the meetings go on Wednesday, and then we'll decide on whether, you know, what further discussions are.
And I'm available.
Could I, could I say something?
Sure.
The Wednesday meeting is to go over the guidelines that the state has put out with the six-foot separation of tables. It does not include how many feet from the sidewalk these tables need to be to have a safe passageway. It doesn't have outdoor lighting, if that's allowed for safety reasons. So Wednesday will be, here are the guidelines, and these are the answers I have for you. But I don't have the concrete questions and answers that I believe you all are looking for and applicants are looking for to put on an application. We've told them they need to have a site plan, but we didn't tell them what that site plan needs to include and what those parameters are as far as traffic flow, how many people, how many feet between barricades and roadways, and if we're allowing them into parking lots, and if we're allowing them onto sidewalks, and what that does to impact traffic and parking. So those are decisions that need to be made, I believe, by you all and not by staff. And I do think that having a meeting before Monday is a good idea if you want businesses to be able to provide you with a plan of what you want and what we can approve.
Okay. We're all fine with that. I see everyone shaking their head. I think we just need some format going into that meeting, so it's a, it's a good discussion.
Is Friday too late, in your minds, for that meeting?
I'm fine with Friday because it's before Monday.
Thursday or Friday.
Yeah, either one. Well, I think you're going to need some time to give us some guidance. So I may, Friday be fine. But Michael?
Friday works for me. I guess what I'd be, I would be looking for, and I'm sure, and I'm willing to do some legwork. Other towns are talking about this. So to Megan's point about roadways, lighting, there has to be some guidelines out there now. I know there is in Boston. I know they've been working on it for quite some time, and I know I can get that. But we should certainly have, to Megan's point, are we going to require barricades? Are we going to require lighting? Are we going to, you know, are we going to require?
And that's why I'm looking for some guidance, Don. I would choose Friday to give some time to collect the information, if that's okay with you folks. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think Friday would be fine, but to Ed's point and Michael's point, honestly, on the way out the door on Wednesday, you should know what the business questions are so that we have answers that are related to what they're worried about, about what, in addition to what, you know, the planning department might be thinking of, whatever. That's, I mean, that meeting, I know that that meeting wasn't set up for that purpose, but for the unanswered part of that meeting, before they leave, I would really heartily urge all the businesses to say, okay, what hasn't been addressed in this meeting? What do you need to know? And what can we do about it?
Yeah. Ed?
Yeah. Well, you know, Don raises the issue of the planning department. And it's my assumption that when we create the process and we answer these questions about barricades and distance from sidewalk, and whether we're going to be able to allow potentially some setup of tables on public space, or any of those questions, that when the restaurant or the business brings in their plan, their site plan and their application, we'll be able to approve, the amended liquor license would be able to approve their site plan and not have to have them have to go in front of the Planning Board, the Board of Health, whatever, the Historic Commission. Because if we do that, you know, it's...
That's, I think that's our assumption, and that's what we're reading into this.
Mr. Chair, I am absolutely not talking about that kind of process. What I am saying, though, is if you want to know, you know, what problem somebody's facing, you might want to ask them before you come up with your own rules. I mean, so my, I was more basing what I was saying on, all right, this is what we already know. This is what we're telling you that you got to do. But what else needs to happen on your part to be able to open that we haven't answered at all? And what do we need to bring in front of the Board of Selectmen so that we can do that package and say, here are the rules, and they've been based on what you actually are asking for as opposed to what we assumed you were talking about?
Cindy, any other comments? If not, I think we'll move on, and we'll meet on Friday after your, after Megan's discussions during the week. And I think just to emphasize, it seems like, Megan, this is the direction you're going. But from our perspective, it's important that this is a two-way discussion with the guidance and their input on what, you know, what works and what may not work.
Yeah, I agree. I think it'll be difficult for some restaurants to operate outside their four walls without some type of alteration. And I know that they're looking for going into parking lots specifically and then sidewalks, which I'm not sure who's going to make the decision on whether or not we close a sidewalk. And that's not something I'm going to decide. So that's where I'm coming from, is that's a question that's already come up. And if it's going to take a public hearing or discussion on the Selectmen's meeting where you want to have a representative from the zoning board or from ADA to speak because it's going to impact those sorts of things, we are thinking ahead of that right now. But it's not something that I believe staff can decide. It's something that you guys need to decide.
Yeah. Everyone's shaking their head. We agree with that, Megan. Jill?
Well, I, when you say that staff's not going to decide that, I welcome that as well.
But we'll accept your guidance.
Well, and thank you. But, and all levity aside, I just want to bear out that what that section's talking about, other than alcohol service, is that restaurants will be authorized to provide outdoor table service at the commencement of Phase Two. The next statement is, requests for expansion of outdoor table service can be approved by the, can be approved by the Board of Selectmen. So the request has to come in for the establishment specifically for outdoor table service, and it can be approved by the Board of Selectmen. Prior to the approval of that request, the Board of Selectmen shall establish a process for approval. So what I... So what I thought, what I think I'm hearing is the meeting on Friday should be a discussion of the Board of Selectmen as to an approval process.
Right.
Understanding that starting on June 8th and soon after, there will be applications for expansion of outdoor table service.
Yep.
So, and I'll yield there, but I, I think we have a few more discussion points before we go on to the agenda.
We're not going to solve this tonight, but we can, we can get ready for the Friday meeting then. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's exactly what I was hoping to hear you say. You can't hold a meeting if you didn't post it, but you can cancel a posted meeting. Why the heck wouldn't we post from Wednesday on? Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, even Saturday? I don't care. I'd be willing to show up.
To be blunt, staff availability and capacity.
Not talking about staff, because this is ultimately going to be a policy decision.
I'm, when I say staff, I mean me.
Okay, well, I think we could... I recognize that, and I'm not actually asking you to go that extra mile, but I think that we need to be able to flexibly meet when we, the earliest we can meet, and then we can get back to staff the next day or whatever. But really, I'd like to be able to hit the ground running. I think everybody here wants to hit the ground running the moment it's allowed. It's just a question of, under what rules? We can drag out what other towns are doing, and if we post each day, then we're all set to go if we need to use it. If we're not, we cancel the meeting.
I would like to give Jill a chance to digest these directives, and then we can, we can come back to that.
You pretty much have to make up your mind, though, soon, because...
Right, we can do it.
The, the time for posting.
Yeah, okay.
To that end, if, if Friday is the first meeting, is there a time that the Board would like to meet?
Later in the day works best for me, but I'll meet, I'll make it work. Whatever works for the rest of the Board is fine.
What works for you, Jill?
Friday's wide open, but I was trying to figure out if it was talking evening, afternoon.
From 12:30 on, I'm okay.
You want to do it midday for a change? Later, Ed?
You know, I, I would think as, you know, noonish, to give a chance for if we'd, whether we make decisions in concrete or by consensus, to give staff direction on how to put that final process together for approval on Monday.
Friday at 1:00?
It would give, it would give afterwards some time for people who had been starting to develop plans to make any amendments to it.
Friday at 1:00?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And then lastly, this whole topic, and Meghan made reference to it, I think Cindy made reference to it, but we're aware of grant opportunities. We've seen in other municipalities, the use of road closures or road restrictions to one-way, things like that, meaning expanding the roadway for more pedestrian access and traffic. If the Board has any immediate thoughts or anything that you'd like us to start vetting, I will throw out there, and this is not meant to surprise or scare anybody, but I did ask staff, specifically Public Safety, to analyze the concept of closing Route 28 for a section, if the state would allow it, from Cross Street to C Street. We could also entertain through Department of Transportation if they would allow us to make certain areas, certain of their roadways one-way to support greater outdoor space to allow for greater outdoor table service.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we're, I know we're looking for natural crossroads, but rather than cross, why wouldn't we make it South Street so that we could, if we needed to pull it in, we could? But there's a, there's a certain amount of real estate beyond cross that actually is pertinent.
I might be getting my streets mixed up. I thought that cross was closer to Bank, and C was closer to South.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
That is correct, but does that cover every?
No, probably, I mean, the, one of the, if I may, one of the suggestions that I had heard around was Bank, Bank to South. Now, that's, that's a pretty substantial, but it does...
That was the original discussion point.
It does pull in all of the various businesses that might, you know, might want to avail themselves of that. I don't know how you reroute the traffic. I mean, I don't have a traffic engineer's degree, so, you know, that I don't know. So, but, you know...
We're managing to do it with the sewers.
And the answer may be no, as far as the state goes, but I just wanted to put that out there for the Board. We can entertain any option, but it would be helpful of the Board, either one way or the other, if you want to give me authorization to start reaching out, I can do that. I wouldn't do that without you all weighing in. There may not be a solution, but I figured it's worth a conversation.
Ed?
Yeah, well, you know, I looked at aerial map of Harwich Port, and if you do cross to C Street, it includes all the restaurants except the...
Embers.
Embers on one side, and the breakfast place that used to be Bonnet's on the other.
Correct.
But it, it provides for access for the residential people to, who live along C Street.
Correct.
The only areas that you get in problems with is the time shares next to Mad Minnow is a problem, and...
If I may, don't they have a back entrance?
They do have a back entrance.
No, they don't.
Yeah, they do. They can just on back, yeah, you can turn, just before you get to the Chamber office, you can turn into their parking lot.
Yeah.
Is that, is that the Mad Minnow?
Yeah, but just before...
Next to, next to Mad Minnow is the time share development.
It has a back entrance.
Okay.
Okay. I've never noticed.
So, but Joe, your question, if I get it, is pretty simply, should you, should you go ahead and see what's possible?
Correct.
I don't see any reason why not. There's anyone, there's no downside to exploring the possibility.
But that was kind of my point, Mr. Chairman. If you started from Bank to South, if it had to be pulled in, that's one thing, but dealing with the state, I'm pretty sure that you can't start small and ask them big afterwards.
Yeah, okay. All right, anything else on this discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I can just say one thing quickly, I will also be available for Friday's meeting, if you would like.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Next on the agenda, Jill?
At this point, it's the public hearing for discussion and possible vote on proposed disposal area fee increase, and I know our Director of Public Works is on the line, so I'll turn it over to him.
Michael? Is this a public hearing?
Correct. Yeah.
We have to, we have to, we have to open the public hearing, sorry.
And then I guess, I guess I would further ask if Scott has anyone on the line, because if he doesn't, we can open it and close it and go to, just looking at the hour, those conversations went a while. So if nobody's on the line, we can open the public hearing and close it and have a brief board discussion.
Well, let me, let me move, we open the public, public hearing, discussion to propose disposal area fee increases to residential sticker fees, non-residential, non-resident sticker fees and recycle-only fees. So that's the motion as a second.
Second.
Second, but open, and to Michael's point, Scott, is anyone on the line to speak to this?
Yeah, Larry, I did open the meeting just a moment ago to let Carol in, because she had gotten her phone, had some problems. There was one person who wanted to speak on the, with Ember. No one else has requested to speak tonight.
In that sense, we'll go ahead and move ahead on the public hearing until they have a chance to call in. Link, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Link Hooper, DPD Director.
Link, if I... Link, if I may, the Board's heard this.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not sure how much the Board wants to hear. The Board's heard this presentation, we all have the memo. I want to spare you the words and the Board, I think, unless somebody disagrees with me, because I think we're, at this point, have exhausted this issue, a lot of time has, but I, I don't know if Link needs to go through the whole presentation if nobody's going to speak on it.
Link, let me just ask you, to that point, is there anything that's different from this than what you presented before?
I have a, if I could have the floor for probably three minutes, I could get through the whole thing. I know I did this a few weeks ago for your consideration, and we need to hold the hearing this evening. I would like to just, two bits of information. One, is the total of all of these requests, if approved, is approximately $120,000 in total of new revenue. In regards to the total operation of approximately $3.2 million, that's roughly a little less than 4%. So it's not the end of the world if Board does not take the action of my recommendations this evening. I've done my very best to minimize this request. The math works out that, you know, we had a $30 per ton increase, and if you figure an average household has about 1.25 tons of trash per year, that math works out to be $37.50 of an increase because of the very robust commercial business. We have, at the disposal area, I've been able to minimize that request to the $20 that's before you this evening. And finally, I, I like to just say that I realize we are in a global crisis, a pandemic, and an economic crisis, and now is not the time to be bringing this forward to you. However, I feel I would be neglectful of my duties if I didn't present you the data. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Link. And I, I appreciate the work you've put into this, and you're kind of called in the middle because we've been asking you in the past, as we have others, to be sure that we, the fees cover our expenses. On the other hand, I think we're all nervous about raising fees during this downtime for the economy and adding more expense to, to everyone. What does it, what's the negative if we postpone this discussion until this fall or some later date when we have a better sense of what the economic situation is?
Two, as you know, we signed new, two new contracts for MSW last January, so we've had six months, or the residents have had six months at the, at the old rate without considering what the new rate should be. Postponing it means that we're going to be looking at probably something in the $30 to $40 range the following year, which is, you know, that is a significant increase. Is it the end of the world? Will the books be out of balance? No. Will it be much tighter to ensure that we're in a position of the taxpayers not covering the operation and it's entirely covered by user fees? It'll be more challenging, but probably doable.
Okay, thank you, Link. Any other comments, Michael?
Well, I have some, but I think we need to close the public hearing before the Board gets into discussion.
Scott, is, are those people we should comment on, available now?
Again, Mr. Chairman, the only person that has requested to speak tonight was in a different section of the agenda.
Okay, so...
I move that we close the public hearing and...
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, we're in the open, we're closed meeting now then. Steve and I will, Michael?
Yeah, I, I, given an awful lot of thought to this, and obviously, being a member of the Board, I've, I've had discussions with Link. He's been kind enough to provide me with as much background and answers to the questions that I had as possible. I know there've been a lot of questions from people in town relative to the overall finances, and I, I, I do think it's right for the presentation to be made to us, to show us where we stand and where the action we take might affect, you know, the residents of the town. I do think we have two options here. I mean, obviously, we are all, as a Board, I think, very concerned about raising fees on anybody at this point in time. We're going to a 1/12 budget. We're all trying to see where we stand as, as we get into the fall. And, you know, I, I would be as comfortable postponing, but with the caveat that, that we recognize and make clear to the people of the town that there will be an increase. There will be an increase at some point here, and it could be $40 or $30, as, as Link had pointed out. And that's what Link's job is. I mean, he, he's there to show us, you know, what they need for revenue in order to run this transfer station and dump the, the way he has run it all along. So if there's a high level of discomfort here on raising fees at this point in time, and I know that, you know, I've had calls too, and I did mention to Link from people who said, gee, what are you thinking about raising fees now? I think, you know, postponement is an option, but it's one, I believe, with the recognition that we are going to have to, at some point, raise fees in order to, in order to keep, you know, the economic cart in, in the right direction. So that's, that's sort of my, my opinion.
Michael, and then Ed?
No, Ed has it first.
Ed first, okay.
Yeah, you know, I...
I thought...
I'll just keep my hand up.
What Steve has indicated, I tend to agree with, you know, over my duration as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I've been one who's advocated that we review and raise fees each year, so we don't get into this situation of having to take a very big jump. I remember shortly after I was first elected in 2005, I believe, the Water Department had to take a big jump in their fees after being very proud the year before that they, once again, for the, I think, seventh year in a row, hadn't taken an increase. And my mind, what that meant is that you went seven years with not making the investment into water system to keep, keep pipes up, you know, and I'd hate to see us do that. And as Mr. Hooper indicated, you know, if we don't increase this year, it will be probably a bigger increase next year. But that being said, I think the uncertainty of both the municipal budget and the uncertainty, I think, of all of our citizens' personal budgets probably makes us a year that we try and tough it out. And if that's, you know, that sort of has, goes against my position that I've held consistently since elected, but I think we are in a situation where all bets are off, and with that, I'd make a motion that we not increase the fee structure this year.
Can you hold off for one second?
Well, we can, yeah, we can hold off, and we'll hold that, although we can second and have a discussion as well.
I'll, I'll second it for discussion.
Discussion, and that way it's on the table. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recognizing I'm probably going to get special delivery from a lot of people from off Cape this comment, but by very definition, the non-residents who are showing up here have a second house. I mean, that, that is what they're, they're coming here not being a resident, so they've got a second place that they're living. The spread here, I would have, I would have actually approved the non-resident part of this. I can't even begin to find it in my heart to raise any fees for anybody who lives here, especially since we have such a large amount of the population that's on fixed incomes that are over 65. But we need to rethink what that spread is. I recognize that there are other towns that use pay-per-throw. I mean, that's really onerous. But the difference is, is less than two bucks a month between a resident and a non-resident. And I don't understand that at all, really.
If we postpone, we'll come back to that, surely, but, Michael?
Well, and I think to Don's point, if this gets voted down, somebody clearly could make another fee schedule motion if they, if they were so inclined. First, I thank you, Link, for the answers that you've answered for my questions. I think at some point, those questions and answers should get into the packet so the rest of the residents can see them, but I do appreciate all the time you took to explain it to me, and as our conversation went today, I still don't agree with you, but I appreciate what you brought forward. I did, I do agree with Don, and I did mention to Link, non-resident sticker fee, if we, if we voted non-resident sticker fee, and I, I would even support the recycle-only fee going up because that's costing us money, for the most part, to get rid of those recyclables. I think at some point, we need to, as a Board, really dive into taking care of the town of Harwich, and only taking care of the town of Harwich, and I think we're all faced with some very... some very difficult decisions coming up on staff, and how big of an operation we have, as we've talked about. And hopefully, not employees, but our operation has gotten very big. And I think now we're forced with looking at every source of revenue and the size of the operation. So I, I was not going to vote for this, and I certainly appreciate Stephen's comments. I have had a tremendous amount of calls on, on raising fees on any level. And, and I wouldn't support raising resident fees, but I certainly would support raising the non-resident sticker, because I think people bringing their trash to Harwich from another town should pay a premium. We're paying a premium to get rid of it, and I would definitely support that.
This, Ed?
What Michael just said raises a question. As I understand it, the non-resident sticker is sold to people who live in other towns but use our, our transfer station. It doesn't apply to people that own second houses here?
It does.
Now, Link, can you, did you hear the question?
Yeah, Selectman McManus is right. The non-resident, of which we sell 145 annually, is for people coming from other towns, particularly towns that have adopted any pay-as-you-throw regulations, as Selectman Howell indicated. I'm actually one of them. I would not be opposed to, to raising whatever the board thought on that, as well as the recycle-only sticker. We don't sell a whole lot of them. It's 325 annually. Serious consideration should be going, should go, that should go up, because recycling has been in the tubes for the last couple of years, quite honestly.
Let me suggest, Don.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, because this is actually, to this point, I've labored under a misconception for probably 20 years. And, and why? Why do people who have a second house here enjoy the same level of services? They've chosen a hometown. So why are they glommed together at the same exact rate as people who live here year-round?
Michael?
My guess is our dumps open seven days a week, and certainly Link, because he comes to work at the transfer station every day. But.
Well, I'm wondering what's possible. I would say, is there a reason that we can't do that?
Let's, let's bring this back a bit. We, we have a motion to not raise rates. I would, my suggestion is we hold on that, and then I'm certainly willing to entertain a second motion to raise the two rates we talked about. I think the split that you're talking about, Don, that requires a further down-the-road answer rather than get a ball gun down that tonight.
But I would like that information.
Right. But we can do two things tonight. We can take an action on this, and we can raise the non-resident and the recycling rates. Is that, Ed?
Well, two things. One, you know, I assume the reason why people who have second homes here pay the same rate as people who live here year-round is because they pay the same taxes on their property that the people who live all the same, whereas the people that are non-resident, i.e. they live in another town, and as, as I understand, a lot of them are people that either work, work, have some, some contact to Harwich that puts them here on a daily, more daily basis, and it becomes a matter of convenience for them. But, you know, to the non-resident property owners, I don't, I wouldn't support increasing the rate they pay in any, any way, shape.
We're not.
But if you would want, I would offer an amendment to my motion to leave, leave the, those increases in for the non-resident sticker and the recycle-only sticker.
Why can't you just recast the motion and then?
I, I think we can hold on to your original motion, and then we can bring back another motion to take care of your, and that simplifies the process. We have a motion and a second to leave the resident, leave the sticker fees the same. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. and now I would entertain a motion to get to your point, Ed, of raising the fees for non-resident and for recyclables.
I make a motion that we approve the non-resident sticker sales from $180 to $200, and the increase for the recycle sticker from $20 to $50.
Second.
So a second? So any discussion? Michael?
The only discussion I have, Link, in your chart, you put the town of Barnstable in at $250. I believe they're curbside pickup, correct?
Some, the 250 represents their drop-off sticker. The town of Barnstable is the only town I'm aware of that is in, that runs their disposal area as an enterprise fund. So, and they don't do a whole lot of commercial, very, very little commercial business.
Okay. And then the last comment, if the board would support, I would ask that CBW Director, look at the commercial MSW rate and see what the tolerance in the market would be for that to make up our shortfall. I have spoken to some commercial haulers. They love the convenience of our dump. They love the proximity to our dump and the fuel savings that they get from certain places, not to go to Yarmouth or any of the other transfer stations. And it sounded like that they would pay more money. So if, if we could at least look at that, I would appreciate it.
That's.
Mr. Chair?
Link, yes.
May you recall, last December, I think it was, or maybe January, when the board voted the two contracts on, upon my recommendation, we increased that commercial MSW rate to $120 per ton, which is $10 per ton over what Comanta charges at the town of Yarmouth, and what I figured the premium was for the convenience and service that Selectman McCaskill looked at. I, I did reach out to several haulers before making that recommendation to you to see what their, their palette was for that, and it seemed about $10 per ton made sense. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Joe, can you just reiterate what the increase that Don made in his motion?
So it'll be the non-resident sticker from, what, $80 to $200, recycle only from $20 to $50.
Thank you. No other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you all. And thank you very much, Link, as always.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the vote to award, and Amy, thank you for hanging around, vote to award bond anticipation notes. Joe, you?
At this point, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to our Finance Director. You can see the letter that she has in the packet for the board. She can walk you through her process.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Hey, Carol.
Can you hear me?
We can.
We can.
Oh, good. We had some great results in the market on the 19th of May when the bond anticipation notes sold. So right now, the town has just over $2.1 million outstanding in existing bond anticipation notes. Those become due and payable on June 18th of 2020. Last year, those bands sold on the market. It was a competitive market. There were four bidders at a net interest cost of 1.68%. So it's time this year to renew those bands. We do some payoff, some short-term payoffs of these bands. We paid off short-term for road maintenance, for the design and engineering, for Fire Station 2, as well as Wychmere Pier. There was a total of $445,000 and some change that we paid down this year. So we're adding about $50,000, well, we're adding $50,000 to the bands, and we're subtracting out what we've already paid down on those. So this year, the bands that went to the market for sale, for a competitive sale totaled $1,765,800. And of that, over $1.5 million is for road maintenance. $153,000 remains for the Fire Station 2 design and engineering. And then there's money for Coldbrook of $20,000 and Phase 2 construction. These are the easements that are not covered under the SRF note. So on the 19th of May, as I mentioned, that we went to market, we had, there were four competitive bidders. The, the total interest cost or that they sold on, or the coupon rate, was a 2% coupon rate. The net interest cost on these bands is 1.004%, which is a great rate. The town was not required to have a rating call with Standard and Poor's, so that was also good news. And so if the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Or if you would like to take up the vote of the Board of Selectmen to authorize those bands, that would be great as well. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Carol? Is there anyone that wishes to, we've been provided a lengthy motion. Does someone care to read that? Steve, you?
I have to read it. I gotta get it here.
It's at the tail end of her spreadsheet.
Page 30.
Probably. Yeah, 30.
Carol, is it acceptable if a member says that they move the vote of the Board of Selectmen as printed in the packet? Or does it have to be read into the record?
I, I believe that that would be sufficient.
Ed, you want to give that a try?
Not to read it into the record.
I move that the Board of Selectmen adopt the statement provided by the Clerk of the Board of Selectmen regarding the award of revenue bands and dated June 1st, 2020.
Second.
Are you comfortable with that, Carol?
I am. Thank you.
There's no other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Carol. We, you said a, I was gonna say a high bar, but I guess a low bar, 1%. We'll hope to keep that.
Hope we can do better next week.
Larry, it's great. As Carol pointed out, that we didn't have to have the rating agencies involved, because that's going to be a tough time for us in the future. Not just us, obviously.
Everyone with this, yeah.
The same issue. But terrific job. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
But Steve, don't we sort of get rated on the curve when they come and look at us as opposed to the rest of the market?
You're thinking of high school.
Joe, we'll move on to item B's, violations in your.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you'll see in the packet, there's a memorandum, there's a memorandum to the board and to me from our deputy chief from last week detailing allegations of potential violations regarding consumption of on-premise alcohol when it is banned during COVID-19. The point of this discussion this evening is not to litigate the facts. It's merely for the board to determine whether you think there is sufficient reason to send this to the interim town administrator as your hearing officer.
We need a motion on that to send, did I?
Be appropriated.
Ed?
Yeah, remanded.
Mr. Chair, I move that we refer the allegations and report to her hearing officer to conduct a hearing and determine what action should be taken.
Is there a second?
Second.
I was hearing a comment, but I'll wait, since we'll wait for the hearing to come through, I think. Steve?
But not directly in relation to these two violations or alleged violations specifically. But I would think that if we do uncover violations like this, it should affect whether we are willing to move ahead with adjusting someone's license in the future relative to, you know, seating outside, that sort of thing. You know, we hope we're all on the same team here in this town. And I think it's very, very clear that all five of the Selectmen want nothing more than to get these businesses back up and running and doing phenomenal business. But, you know, if they're not going to work with us, you know, I, I think that's a, that's, that's a, that's a real issue.
Those are actually going to be my comments as well, Steve, but I decided to wait until we see the hearing. But we, we expect, it only works with cooperation.
Right.
Very disappointed in this, these allegations. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Joe, we'll leave it in your hands and report back to us. And I think, just to reiterate what Steve said, we're, we're trying obviously very hard to work with businesses. And this only works if the businesses work with us. And we have also, we know we do outdoor seating, for instance. Noise may come back as being a factor. And so we need everyone to, to be on the same page. I certainly agree with that. Michael?
Just a comment or a question, and maybe Joe could follow up with the board. I know that there was a hearing done, or second set of hearings done on businesses in Harwichport. One, I believe, mentioned in this allegation, but also another business. We never got any results from those hearings.
Correct. And if I, I had an update under TA report, but if you want me to do it now, I'm.
Do it now. Well, no, go ahead while we're on the subject.
Sure. No. And, and thank you, because I anticipate. So one of the hearings was concluded right before the onset of COVID. The other one that was scheduled was scheduled for the week that the governor shut everything down. That second one is being rescheduled. I believe it's going to happen sometime middle or the end of this month. And before then, I should be able to wrap up the first hearing. So the one that was done in late February, a decision may be able to be rendered before the board this month. The second establishment, we're resuming the hearing process, and then there will be the hearings that you just remanded to me this evening.
Okay.
And I ask because, you know, during the noise committee meetings, several residents, I don't want to say laugh at the board, but were not pleased with the actions that we took, and didn't feel like the punishment, there was ever any punishment for anyone that did anything down in Harwichport noise-wise. And they want us to take, and I believe that was going to be one of the recommendations from the noise committee, would be swifter action. So, and I knew that one was kind of lurking out there, so.
Good. Thank you, Joe. Michael?
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the, an update by Chief Clark on the.
Mr. Chair, before you go on with that, I'd like to extend the board's birthday wishes to Norm tonight. This, today's his birthday.
Thank, thank you very much.
I'll be, I'll be kind, Norm, and I will sing "Happy Birthday" for you.
I, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. I've been sitting here for two hours, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Norm.
Norm, can you give us an update on the town administrator search committee?
I'd be glad to, Mr. Chairman. We received 46 applications for the town administrator's position. One of those was two days late, and I, I rejected that one. The process was to place an advertisement in three appropriate media outlets, and that process was overseen by Mr. Lawton. The applicant, the applications were all received through a secure email to the town clerk, Anita Dusette, and this was for security reasons. And at the end of the time period, the town clerk called me and said that she would put together packets, five packets of hard copies of all the information. And she did do that. When she notified me of that, that when that was completed, I went to Town Hall and I picked up the five sealed envelopes with all the information in them. I, I kept one. Then I delivered the other four to the Public Safety Building, and more specifically, in the Dispatch Center, which is a secure facility, and instructed the other four members that their packets were available for pickup there. That was done really for process, to make sure that, that we didn't have any interaction with each other upon the delivery of all that information. That has been done. We've started the process of review of the applications. The one thing that we did try also to do, we had a technical issue with a backup of sending those applications electronically, but those files were too large and were unable to be delivered. So tomorrow morning, I'm picking up five thumb drives, and we'll deliver them the very same way I did the applications. They'll, I will keep one, and four will go to the Public Safety Facility for the other four members to pick up. We agreed at the last meeting, our last meeting, on a scoring format. It's rather, rather to the point and not too complicated. It's based on. It's, uh, based on a one-to-five rating. That, that system was, uh, voted on, and a electronic form for that was developed by Linda Cibula, and we were all sent, uh, individually, uh, our own rating, uh, forms. Uh, it's incumbent upon all of us to fill out those forms as best we can and, uh, get them back, uh, to Linda. Once again, she will compile that in, information. None of us having any interaction with each other on who scored what on who. The minutes of the, our next meeting, June tenth, will also include a blank copy of that scoring sheet, and most likely will include, uh, the questions that we plan to, uh, ask, um, the candidates, uh, that we feel, uh, deem, uh, interviews. We have been guided very well with KP Law. I'm just gonna hold up a, uh, best I can, though. Not very good, but KP Law provided us with a nine-page guidance, um, and it's titled "Search Committee Protocol," and we are following that quite closely. Uh, we met with, uh, KP Law in our initial meeting, and subsequently, uh, Linda Cibula, the clerk of the committee, has reached out to them to touch base on making sure that what we were doing was correct and what we plan to do in the future is correct. And I am comfortable, uh, to report to you, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, we are within the guidelines of the open meeting law in our following process and procedure. Uh, we will, um, probably for the first time, either this next, uh, next week or the, or very closely thereafter, as long as everyone has compiled their score sheets, uh, to go into executive session, because at that point, we will be, uh, discussing, uh, uh, names and resumes and the applications, and that, that is, uh, something that we will, uh, keep private. Uh, once the, uh, final group, uh, whatever number that we deem, uh, appropriate, uh, to recommend to the board, uh, it, I believe that then it's up to the board then to make those names public, but that will, uh, come down to you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, that's my report for this evening, if you, uh, have any questions.
I just have one. Thank you, Norm. Uh, your speculation on when we may see it, uh, it get to our hands?
I would think that, uh, we will be ready in the, uh, in July, mid-later July, to, uh, bring names forth, uh, forward to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Other questions?
I mean, there's a, there's a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of information that we all, that we need to read through. I mean, those are a lot of applications, which is a good thing.
It's very good to have that many applications. Michael?
Uh, thank you, Norm. Thanks for the update and happy birthday. The, um-
Thank you.
The, you know, I read through the guidance, that legal opinion from, um, town council, and it, it really did say that you guys needed to bring back the questions to a public meeting and vote the process. I haven't seen in any-
Yes.
-any of your minutes where you guys have brought back, like, the scoring system. And there is some, there is some questions, one I know you're aware of, and I believe that's probably why we did the legal opinion, uh, tonight, but one, one resident, um, did question you, did question Larry, and did question myself, and another couple residents are feeling like the process isn't very transparent. And I, I guess I would ask, for the next set of minutes, that the email correspondence and how you guys came up with the scoring system and as much information as we could pass along to the public-
Yeah.
-the better, because as you read through it, um, and watch the minutes, it says, um, did everyone get the questions, but then nothing ever got voted. So people are asking where the, what are the questions, and how did we come up with the criteria? That, that's my first, and that's just a transparency thing. And, and in the beginning of this, and I know the rules changed a little bit, we did talk about this being a very transparent process. That's one. And then the second is, when does the Board of Selectmen and where does the Board of Selectmen get to review the applications? 'Cause throughout this whole process, we did discuss the board seeing all of the applications, not just the final three or four.
I, I believe, I'll, I'll go back to the first one. We haven't voted on questions. That's, that's gonna be a topic of the next meeting. What we did do is, uh, was instructed all the members at that last meeting, which is, uh, they are public meetings and, uh, for everyone to see, is that most likely at this next meeting, those questions were submitted to the clerk, uh, Linda Cibula, to compile a list of, uh, questions, uh, from, from the other members. So when that is made, uh, brought forth to the committee, that will certainly be a part of the, uh, it'll be discussed openly in part of the minutes, as will the scoring sheet that, uh, Linda sent out with the app, when we received the applications. The number of applicants, uh, that you want brought forward to you, um, I have, I don't have it right in front of me, but I do know that there was a vote, uh, of the board, uh, to not see all the applications. Um, and I guess we'll have to dig into that deeper. Um, you've, you've asked the committee to go through the applications and bring forward to you the top, you know, three to ten candidates, uh, for your, for your approval.
And, and that's my memory too, Michael, that we had the discussion on that at the time.
Just, just, um, I'll, I'll just go there. I'd like to see the minutes on that, and I know the board's very behind on their minutes, but, or, or we could go back and find the video. Don was very specific that he wanted to see all of the applications or have the ability. I definitely said, and it was never voted against, we did tell the interview committee that we wanted them to bring back four people, absolutely, but the board agreed that we would be, have the right to look at them. Matter of fact, we had the conversation that they would be in the clerk's office for us to view because of the sensitive material. So I'll find that meeting, but I wanna see the applications.
Because at this point, I disagree with that. We, uh, what, what I put together was a, we voted on, was to, uh, have them recommend four or five people bring to us, and the applicants are there. If we reject all those, we can go back and look at the applicants. But I'll, I'll find those minutes, and I'll find the letter that we voted on. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, you're both right, but Michael's more right. Uh, when we started the process, we did vote that because we had a consulting firm that we were afraid were going to goaltend on us. And we, we did explicitly vote. Then we changed the process, but we never explicitly addressed that we didn't wanna see the applications anymore. So the last vote we took really was to see everything.
I don't, uh, I disagree with that. We'll look at the minutes. Michael?
Okay, and I'm just gonna publicly state, as a board member, I wanna see the applications. So I will be willing to go back through and cut and paste all of the meetings that we had on this and show the conversation if you'd like. Um, but I believe as the chair, you could do that as well. And then back to the, uh, questions, Norm. It wasn't just the, um, it wasn't just the questions that you're gonna ask. So the questions have been asked, what is the interview process and, and the discussion involved in the interview process? And maybe we haven't gotten there yet. The scoring system and the discussion on the scoring system. You've already, uh, answered the question about, um, about the, uh, questions that you're gonna ask, and, and I appreciate you gonna bring those back. And then, how many steps are there in the process? That was another question that was asked. Um, so maybe just an overview, since we don't have a search committee anymore-
That makes sense.
... of what the actual process here is gonna be, so that we can show some transparency to the taxpayers.
Makes sense.
I, I, first I wanna say, we, we serve at the pleasure of the Board of Selectmen. Uh, I do have a, I had asked, uh, that question back, uh, um, in May to the clerk, Linda Cibula, and, um, she just stated that early March, a formal Board of Selectmen meeting, the board voted not to have board members review the resumes of all applicants. But you, you can, uh, tell us what you like. If, uh, you, you vote tonight to have a copy of all the applications left in the clerk's office, um, I'll do whatever you choose us to do. Uh, but we, we open the, the meeting, just as you do here, with an opportunity for the public, um, to comment. Um, I certainly am, um, available. Uh, I have a, I have a town email, uh, I have a town phone, and the, at least one of the individuals that was concerned, I emailed back, uh, they know where I live, and I, I reemphasized my cell phone number. So we, we certainly wanna make sure that the, the, uh, we're transparent, um, and we do things right. Um, but, but I guess I get a little, I get, I guess I get a little sensitive on gotcha moments. Uh, so I, and we're trying to do the best we can. Uh, we, uh, we rely heavily on KP Law. Um, I think we have, um, the people on the committee are, 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 are well-versed in a lot of these things and from different perspectives, and certainly with two previous, um, members of the Board of Selectmen, um, I think they, they have a lot of good guidance here. So we, if there's some errors or, or things that you think we should do better, uh, we certainly will work on that. That's about all I can say to that.
Uh, Norm, I would think on the, uh, Michael's process question, uh, possibly just some dot points on when you're doing what when. We'd probably respond to that.
Yeah, and, sure, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that, uh, the minutes of the next week's meeting, uh, outline, uh, your, your questions and your, um, uh, and your thoughts going forward. Uh, you make good points, and, uh, I appreciate the guidance, uh, you know, uh, no, we don't have a, have a, a professional doing this. Uh, I think it, it puts a more, uh, lot more burden on, on us as committee members, uh, but we, we said we would do that to save the taxpayers some money, and we're gonna do the best we can to, uh, provide the taxpayers and the board with the, uh, with the best and the fairest process, uh, possible, so that you folks can make the decision on, on our future.
And, uh, we, uh, carefully chose the committee. Each one had a member, I, we have an extremely, we have a very strong committee, and, uh, and, and we're proud of that, so. Put that in the record. Uh, Ed?
Well, a, a, as to the, the question about seeing all of the resumes, is my understanding that if we as a board do review all the resumes, then they have to be made public, um, which is, for many applicants, not the expectation. Um, and if, if that's the case, then before we do that, I think we need to inform them that's what we're doing and offer them an opportunity to withdraw their applications.
Well, let's not make that decision tonight. I wanna go back and review the, the minutes and the process, 'cause I do disagree with that. Okay, Michael?
Ed, Norm, just, um, for clarification, by no means was there any gotcha intention in my questions. It was simply if we could take the process and put it into a packet so that the general public can read it in the packet, obviously without names. That's all I was asking.
Yep, I got it. I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting that you, uh, were the one to put the gotcha moment forward. Um, I just feel that, well, it's part of transparency, Mike, is that, um, uh, we as a committee, uh, are, are accessible, and I am extremely accessible, and certainly if someone has questions or, or guidance to us as a citizen, uh, I am more than open to, to all the help we can get. We're not trying to hide anything.
Yeah, and I don't wanna make it sound like it's one person. I, I, all I'm saying is if we put it in the packet, the rest of the public that wants to read it can read it. And then just to Ed's point, the board reads confidential documents all the time. If we read a document, we don't have to, we don't have to, uh, share their information with anyone. And that was part of the discussion.
That wasn't the reason that, that I put forward before.
Just so we're clear, that was part of the discussion, that the board would have the right to review applicants, and we had lengthy discussion about it. So we'll just find the clip.
We'll, we'll clarify that, 'cause right now, I, I disagree with that.
Okay.
The endpoint of that. I, I agree, we had the long discussion, but I disagree with what it came up. So, okay, we've disagreed before, so we can, uh-
Anytime. Thank you.
We'll sort it out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Norm.
Thanks, Norm.
You're welcome.
Uh, next, then, our contracts, Joe.
So the next item, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you may recall, is a presentation dating all the way back to November eighteenth. Uh, we have Richard Scally from the town of Barnstable on the call. Uh, so Richard, if you could unmute your phone, um, and, and what you have in front of you is, uh, the result of discussions, uh, that occurred between Richard and I and staff. The original proposal had language that, um, uh, that we felt was not proper for the town to sign. Uh, it's my understanding that, uh, the document that we have in front of us is an intermunicipal agreement that, uh, town of Barnstable has used with all other municipalities on Cape Cod for whom they're doing service. So, um, I'll defer to, to Richard at this point for him to confirm that, and then if the board so decides, I have the contract, excuse me, I have the, um, intermunicipal agreement here. Uh, in this instance, we'd be signing first, or you'd be signing first, 'cause we're the, we're the, um, beneficiary, not the, um-
Prover.
Lead party, thank you. Uh, Richard, are you able to unmute yourself? It'd be star six if you're on the phone. Scott, are you able to assist in that regard?
Yeah, I did send him a, uh, request, uh, through, through meeting to unmute or to show his camera. I, I, no, no response yet.
Joe, uh, we can easily move on.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Larry, if you, uh, my apologies. Uh, looks like someone's trying to join the meeting right now, so with your permission, I'll unlock it just in case that's him.
Okay.
We're second to see if that's him, right?
No, uh, Joe, I'm not sure how much we need this discussion anyway at this point. I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion, and we, if he joins us, you, to, uh, clarify more, we can do it.
I move that we accept the, uh, intermunicipal agreement as contained in the package and sign it.
Between the town of Barnstable and the town of Harwich.
Between the town of Barnstable and the town of Harwich.
Your second?
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. We move quickly on that, but I think it's pretty, uh, it's a lot of paperwork, but pretty straightforward. Uh, Joe?
Thank you all, appreciate that. And then next, we have, um, in your packet, we have our, our golf course cart lease extension. It's been reviewed, um, by staff, by, uh, Bob Lawton, by council, and if I have the right one, it has also been approved as to funding.
And, uh, Roman, uh, I think discussed this last week during his, uh, presentation.
Correct. He is available in case the board has any question. Uh, staff recommends approval of the contract.
Any questions, Michael?
No, do we even have to make, take an action? This is a lease, not a contract.
So it, um, it does require, um, approval and signature by the board.
Okay.
Does anyone, uh, entertain a motion?
I move that we authorize the extension of the golf cart contract at Cranberry Valley Golf Course, sixteen point seven-five percent of gross golf cart revenue. Second.
Other discussion? Uh, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Roman, thank you for, pardon?
I'll vote aye to extend the lease.
Right. Thank you. Uh, Roman, thanks for hanging on, but I think you clarified it. This is pretty clear, and you had a good discussion in your last, uh, pre- presence here.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could work for you-
The town administrator.
Uh, Richard, if you can hear me, the board has approved the agreement, so I will reach out to you, uh, later in the week to finalize that.
Thank you. I just, I just forgot how to unmute. I, I appreciate your, your, your vote.
Okay. Thank you, Richard. Uh, Scott, you said, is there anyone else wishing to join us in public forum?
Uh, there was, uh, Ray Tomlinson, uh, was, had requested to speak. Uh, I don't know, uh, whether he still intends to or not, since we passed, uh, the section that he wanted to speak on. Um, the meeting is open, so if you want, I can give that email address again, and we can take a, uh, just give him a moment to join.
Go ahead and do that, Scott, I think, and while in the meantime, we could, uh, Joe, you can move the town administrator report.
Well, if I may, while Scott, uh, may have someone joining on, I have reached out through staff and explained to Attorney Tomlinson that he was welcome to discuss whatever he wanted in open public forum, but it was not appropriate for him to speak on the board remanding the case to me. Um, so Scott has made reference to, that's the topic he was trying to weigh in on.
Oh, okay. And that, that is correct, I. Uh, Joe, you wanna move then to town administrator report?
Yeah, uh, certainly, and I just have one item, but, um, I think the board is, and the community will be interested in this very quickly. Um, as you all may recall, at your meeting on March twenty-sixth, uh, the town elected to, um, direct staff to not have voluntary water main shutdowns, um, as we had talked about during the pandemic. So as a result of that, as anticipated, uh, we've been informed through our- So as a result of that, as anticipated, we've been informed through our wastewater superintendent that Robert Beauer, the week of June 8th, will be installing the Parshall Flume and hydrants, and that is near the animal hospital at the intersection there at Old Queen Anne. The majority of the work is expected to occur during the week of June 8th, and again, this ties back to the board's previous discussion. The overall cost, which will come later to the board, is just under $2,700. And that is my report.
Thank you, Joe. We'll move then to the selectmen's reports. Steve?
Really nothing. I just want to thank all the department heads for having joined us the other day for that discussion. Hopefully, they found it helpful, and I just want to reemphasize again that they have thoughts, ideas, they should always bring them forward, obviously, to the town administrator or joining at the selection.
Thank you, Steve. Michael?
No report.
Ed?
Well, it's not so much a report, I just, I was talking to some folks in town, and I'm not sure if many people are aware, but several, I'm not sure if it's several weeks or a month ago, one of our residents, he and his wife passed away within a couple of days of each other, and, but I want to refer to specifically Terry Cronin, who was a fellow who lived in town, a very likable guy. He, I don't know if he ever sat on any town committees or commissions, but one of, what he did was, he spent an enormous amount of time both driving for the family pantry and volunteering there, and driving for the, the bus for the Friends of the Council on Aging. You could always count on him to take an extra shift if somebody else couldn't make it, and was appreciated and well-liked by all of his customers, and I just think it was a note to make note of his passing.
Thank you, Ed. We appreciate it. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is going back to a recurring theme. I'm not sure what to do about it, but the wastewater sewer construction. I have, on numerous occasions, begged, pleaded to have better signage about the detours and what you could and what you couldn't do if you made a turn, if you didn't make a turn. I, I note that, without a whole heck of a lot of discussion on anybody's part, the bottom of 137 where it meets 39 is bereft of any signs. I've seen people turn left up there and then make a U-turn and come right back down. It would be really helpful if you said, open to local traffic only, no outlet to Route 6, just something like that. And as an adjunct to that, we need to be careful because of where they're placing, what the burden they're putting on us, and it seems to be like a number of disparate projects are all like congealing together here. The, the detour, I mean, there's bad, you live in that area, that Queen Anne Road has become like you can't get there, road anymore. But more than that, the major traffic that they're taking off of a state highway and dumping off onto Pleasant Bay Road, because it's got a four-way, I mean, a two-way stop there, is, is making an immense burden on the people who live on Pleasant Bay Road. I mean, I've had a number of people call me. I personally went past one of those where, it was one and one-half miles long, backed up, because somebody was trying to make a left turn at the stop sign. If, if that's what they're going to detour, we might want to coordinate with the police to have a person there to be able to make that traffic more efficiently disappear.
Yeah, I think the intersection you're talking about is Pleasant Bay and 39.
Yes.
And I get backed up forever on that.
But again, backing up to the first one.
Yeah.
We have been promised that if we're going to do something major, it's a major place, it's nice, the local, open the local business sign is a quarter mile up the road after you make the turn.
Maybe, Joe, you and Griffin can explore that a little bit.
We'll work with staff and the contractors.
Because I get stuck sometimes. I know they're publishing weekly reports going on, but those reports are fairly general. You know, they'll say it's working on a broad stretch of road, but I come out on my driveway, I don't, I don't know if, I don't know where they're actually working. And so I end up going around in circles, even though I can, I mean, generally, this, because it's always the same, they're working on Church Street and 39, but they could be, and there are more signs, but even more specific, you know, give us, give us a fighting chance to find a way out.
I'll follow up with Charlie and staff.
Ed?
Yeah, hi. Last week, I drove up from 39 on Pleasant Bay to get towards 6, and I was doing fine. It was traffic coming the other way.
Yeah, right.
About three-quarters up through the, I don't know, mile of backup was presumably the patrol officer who was being sent to get to the front of the line to help move traffic along faster, you know.
That's the one.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, second. Thank you. We'll, we'll see you all, if not before, on Friday.